Call the public meeting and City Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 2, 2019. May we stand for the public?
Hey, there was no flag.
My flag. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, can you call the vote?
Commissioner Frazia?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Mayor Metzger? Here. Okay, the first item on the agenda is public discussion items not on the agenda. If there's anything anybody has to bring forward that's not already on the agenda, please do so. All right, seeing no one, I will move on to the next presentation by the Ferndale Public Schools Superintendent, Dania Bazey.
Thank you.
You get to try out our new.
Wow, inaugural.
This is it.
Looking at the clock, I don't want to break there. Well, good evening, members of the commission, Mayor Metzger, City Manager Breckman, thank you very much for giving us time on your agenda this evening. First, congratulations, obviously, on your updated meeting area.
Oh, thank you.
Quarters.
Isn't that pretty?
It is beautiful, so congratulations on that. So, our presentation is two-part. I'm Dania Bazey, and with me is Jamie Stottlemyer, who's our Director of Operations and Facilities at Ferndale Public Schools. So we'll be kind of tag-teaming a little bit of the presentation. Since we last met, we're going to share a little bit about what's been taking place in Ferndale Public Schools, and then share some information on two upcoming ballot proposals that you will see on the March 2020 ballot. All right, so since we've last visited, Ferndale Public Schools has established a new strategic plan that has an updated vision, mission, and goals for the upcoming five years. So our strategic plan will be a living, breathing document that we will monitor and adjust as needed over the next five years. One thing that's interesting is that this was done by a group of about 25 community stakeholders. So it was interesting, the Board of Education and myself, as well as the administration, really couldn't speak much during the strategic planning session. There are ways that we could offer input, but this was really driven by the community, so it's something we're very proud of. It is on our website available, should be pretty easy to find from, again, my perspective, but if you need any assistance, we can certainly help, and that URL will take you there. So the one unique thing about our strategic plan is that our vision statement is an equity vision statement, and I'll read it. At FPS, we are a school family of continual learners. We support each and every student to develop their purpose, plan, and passion. We encourage and honor dialogue about histories, cultures, and the goals of our community. We actively and intentionally facilitate equitable access and representation, meaningful participation, and high expectations for all. One thing that's unique through our strategic plan is that, like typical strategic plans, there's three goal areas, right? Environment, excellence, and empowerment, that really, you know, center around facilities and infrastructure, curriculum and programming, and then communication and school culture, right? Those are typical of a school's strategic plan. There was a lot of discussion about if equity, as you know, is very important to all of our communities, the entire Ferndale Public Schools district, is an important kind of bucket. So there was a lot of discussion of if this should be its own individual bucket or not. And the committee came to the conclusion that equity really has to kind of be the vein of the strategic plan. It has to be included in all parts, because without equitable access for all students, then we really don't achieve any of the goals within the strategic plan. It's something that really is unique within our school district, that we're committed to all students, and we actually live that. So a couple of things, really proud to be a part of Ferndale Public Schools. This year, we were honored for a couple of things, and I'm just going to go into brief detail on both of those things. We were recognized as a 2019 Equity Innovator from Midwest Plains Equity, that's out of Indiana University and Purdue University. The Board's commitment to equitable-based practices has been noticed, and we're very proud that we've been honored for that. Again, the lens from the Board of Education in every decision we make is, is this equitable to all students? The second thing we were recognized for is, I'm sorry, is our Model Schools Conference. Oh, it's, I'm sorry, I'm not used to this, it's going the wrong way. I'm going to be patient, there we go. Instead of talking to it. The other thing is, we were recognized in Washington DC at the Model Schools Conference for our social-emotional curriculum. Our Assistant Superintendent, Deana Rochell, this is an extreme passion of her, and our social-emotional curriculum goes from kindergarten all the way, actually, from pre-K all the way to 12th grade. This was at the Model Schools Conference, there was over 5,000 attendees at that conference, where we were recognized as an innovative district in terms of our curricular and programming related to this area. And for those of you who aren't familiar, again, on our website, we have extensive information on what the social-emotional curriculum entails and kind of what that is. Again, it's teaching, it's sometimes thought of as soft skills, but they're really not soft at all, they're actually essential skills that we need as adults, they're problem-solving skills, they're critical thinking skills. I'm a former math teacher, and no one's ever asked me, you know, what's the quadratic formula? Not yet, at least, maybe you guys will ask me now based on that. But they do ask me to work in teams, to work with people who have differing views than myself, organizational skills, problem-solving skills. So although that math, science, English, and social studies are certainly important, there's other skills also that students need to leave with once they graduate from Ferndale Public Schools. So I'm going to hand it over to Jamie, who's going to speak.
I wanted to recite the quadratic equation. Negative B squared minus B squared minus 4AC over 2E, right? See? I had to help my kids with their homework the other night. So we're going to be talking a little bit about something that we're very excited to announce. For the past year, we've been working with an architect, GMB, on the west side of the state, and then also a construction manager, Clark, they're out of Farmington Hills, on prepping for a bond issue for our district. We met with a team of engineers, and we did a thorough assessment of our entire district, and we came up with the realization that we have a lot of needs, infrastructure needs, modernization needs. Now, a few years ago, we did pass a sinking fund, and that generates about $850,000 a year. So a sinking fund's kind of like a home equity loan. In other words, you borrow a little bit of money, do a small project, but you have to borrow as you go along. Whereas a bond is more like a home mortgage. We can sell the bonds, and we get all that money upfront to make massive improvements, and that's what we're looking at to do right now. So the exciting thing is, we're in a rare position right now, where property values are going up and interest rates are low. So we've been working with our financial planners, and we determined that we could actually borrow 125 million without raising taxes. So the millage rate would stay the same, but what we would do is break this up into three series. So in other words, we would sell the first set of bonds in 2020, which would generate 53 million, the second series would be 2023, 35.5, and the last series would be in 2026 for 36 million. All in all, 125 million with no additional taxes. So if we look at a typical homeowner, right now, we're at seven mils, it's a zero-mil increase, and if you know a mil is about, I think it's $100 per 100,000 of tax value, just to give you an idea, but our millage rate would stay the same. We already talked about the three-series bond, but what's this going to allow us to do is essentially, by drawing this out over basically a decade, we're going to be able to come up with a long-term plan for our district. So instead of getting all this money and then spending it all really quickly, this is going to be a very thought-out process. So we've identified, we have several hundred pages of documents of needs, we've gone through and assessed everything, and between the sinking fund and this bond, we're going to be able to come up with a long-term plan for our district that'll sustain us for many So some of the major projects that we're looking at in this bond, the first one is we're looking to build a brand-new elementary school. We had discussions with both the City of Ferndale and the City of Oak Park, and what we've landed on is putting this new elementary school where Jackson Park currently is. That's where the Casa building is, over on the west side. We're in negotiations right now with Oak Park to buy Jackson Park, that's where that softball field is. If we're able to acquire that piece of property, then the building would be built on the south side of that property where the ball field is now, we would leave Casa intact, and then when that building's done, when the new elementary's done, we would knock down Casa and put in the parking lot and the playground where that's at. One of the reasons that we are looking at a new elementary is because although we love Roosevelt, and Roosevelt will stay as Roosevelt, and we'll talk about that in a second, it just doesn't meet the needs of a modern educational facility for young children. First off, it's only on a three-acre lot, we don't have a lot of room for the kids to play outside. If we're able to acquire the Jackson Park, we'll have almost 11 acres out there, so they'll have a lot of green space, a lot of large playgrounds to play on. It'll give us enough property to be able to spread this building out. So we're looking at approximately an 80,000-square-foot building that will house up to 600 students. Right now, Roosevelt, the children are almost spilling out of it, it's up to capacity, and the other issue is, we have, we call the garden level. By code, we're not allowed to put kindergartners and first graders down on that basement level, so that kind of limits the capacity of that building. And also, we don't have a separate cafeteria, so they have to break down the gym every day to feed the children, and then get it set back up for gym class, so it adds to some operational inefficiencies, in addition to the classrooms being a little undersized compared to what current classrooms, you know, are geared towards. So the whole focus of this bond, though, is going to be on safety, sustainability, and reimagining the classroom experience. And so in addition to the new elementary, we're also going to be renovating every single classroom in the district, so this is really going to be a student-focused bond. What can we do to improve the educational experience of our students? Other things that we're looking at is, over at the high school, we have two pools, one of them's currently underutilized, so we're going to convert that pool into a new weight wrestling fitness room. We're going to be building winter, what we call a winter addition, or a winter entry onto the athletic wing for sports like basketball, volleyball, swimming. Right now, we have those steps that go down to our pool areas, kind of allude in the wintertime when it gets frozen, so there'll be a new atrium there that'll greet people, so we'll be able to use that for winter sports. We're putting in new tennis courts, we're rebuilding our stadium to, I think we have like three bathrooms in men's and women's right now for the entire stadium, there should be like 20, so we're going to be upgrading and updating that. We're going to be building a new theater addition, which is green rooms and spaces behind the theater. We're also going to be building a new music room addition, a large varsity, or high school, I should say, high school band room at the high school. And do you want to talk about the headly override?
So, yeah, the headly override is something that, again, because property taxes are doing so well, it keeps rolling back. And so the state of Michigan, the way school funding works after Proposal A is that districts have to levy 18 mils to get the full foundation allowance for your school district. So as you approach 18 mils, if it goes under 18 mils, the minimum foundation allowance, you actually get less, because the state's not willing to make up that difference. So if you only levy 17.7, the state is basically saying, then you're out of luck. This does not affect homeowners at all for primary residents, this affects businesses and rental properties. So again, it's something we have to put on the ballot, the timing isn't the best with both proposals, but, you know, that's why we're here explaining those things and making sure that the community understands. Bottom line is, both the headly override and the board will not change the current tax millage rate. Again, we're not going to say that it doesn't change your taxes, because obviously, that can change based on your property value and things of that nature. So the timing is really right, and just to emphasize what Jamie stated with the 10-year plan, because a lot of discussion has been around planning, and that's a commitment you'll have from Jamie and myself. We truly hope to see this bond throughout, so to be here for the 10 years, to make sure that we're good stewards of the community's tax dollars, and to ensure that our students have the very best education that they deserve. Both handouts, there's two handouts. There's one that kind of gives you an FAQ for the bond, and then an FAQ for the non-homeside headly override, and then there's the PowerPoint presentation, there's copies back there for everyone. Also, Jamie and I will be, obviously, and the community, will be having a number of informational sessions available to the public. Our website that we're housing all of the information for the bond is ferndaleforward.com. I highly urge you to go to this website, it's highly interactive, and there's a ton of information. Also, there's my contact information as well as Jamie's, that's our cell phone number, if you have a question, if you, anything, send an email, call. Jamie's also great at giving tours of the building for you to be able to see it, to see classroom space, and understand what we're trying to achieve through the bond, so.
I did want to mention one other thing, too.
Oh, yeah, please.
Yes, we have a long road show that we normally do, so normally I talk about 45 minutes on this topic, so when it cut me shortage, I just wanted to mention the Roosevelt building. We are going to move Casa over to Roosevelt, that's the game plan right now. So that building will be renovated for Casa, it suits them better, and so it'll stay intact as is, we're going to replace the roof, and I know that impacts this community, because it splits between Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge, so I just wanted to mention it.
What's the timeframe with that?
For the Casa renovation? Well, the new elementary and the Casa renovation is in the first series. So it typically takes a year to design a new elementary school, then about a year, year and a half to build it. So actually, next week, we're meeting with the construction manager, come out with the actual phasing of the projects and stuff, but, so you're probably looking at 2022.
Okay. Well, let's think, what period of enrollment at Casa?
Casa is, what, 300, Dania?
It's between, there's three hours that Casa is utilized, it can range anywhere at one given time between 300 and 400 students. The biggest makeup of students are Ferndale students, Berkeley, and Oak Park.
And are there two measures on the ballot, or one for both topics?
So there'll be two different measures. So the three-series bond will be one vote, but it will authorize the district to sell the bonds every three years. So that, again, it will allow us to hold the millage rate at its current rate.
Got it. And then the headly override.
And then the headly override is a separate, yes.
You said that the new K2 would be 600, up to 600 students?
600 students, correct. Right now, they're designing it for 80,000 square feet.
What's the present K2?
500.
513, yeah.
We like to design to about 85% capacity, so it gives us a little better room for growth.
Are there any other, any questions? No questions?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. It was great.
Thanks for bringing handouts.
Yeah, it was great, thanks.
Next item on the agenda is a request by Whistlestop 1 LLC, 24060 Woodward Avenue, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan, regarding an amendment to the Class C liquor license and operating agreement. Before we open the public hearing, Jim, do you have any?
Sure.
Where's the wisdom?
So the Whistlestop is expanding their restaurant, and they've been through a number of steps in that process so far. The probably most significant one was getting a special land use approval from the Planning Commission to expand the restaurant. They had to meet parking and some other site improvement requirements, including moving where they're storing their garbage, and making sure that they have enough off-street parking for the expansion portion of their business. At this step, now, this is the final step in the public portion of the process, the Whistlestop needs to update their liquor license operating agreement with the city. The initial agreement was tied to the number of seats that were in the existing restaurant, I think it was 46. So at this point, they're asking the city to approve increasing the number of seats for the liquor license to the currently proposed 58. So there's a new liquor lighting operating agreement, that is a legal document that's been prepared by the applicant's attorneys, been reviewed by the city attorney, we have agreement on that. Should this be approved by the City Commission tonight, then we could sign that agreement. So that'll be signed by the mayor, and then the proprietor of the business. So we can do that after the meeting, today or tomorrow, if approved. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, it's a high-level overview, we've been over this a few times publicly, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but.
Any questions before we open? Okay. So I will open the public hearing. Amy, I think there were, we got some.
There were five comments that were received prior to the meeting, four of them were in favor and one of them was opposed.
Anybody in the room like to come up and come up, give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, Tom Greenwood, 29, Sylvan, across the street from that guy. I'd just like to say that I'm in favor of this, I eat at the Whistlestop at least three times a week, and he's a good guy, it's crowded, it's popular, it's good food, and I can't see anything negative with amending the liquor license, I think it would work out just fine. It's, you know, not like we have all that many businesses either, so, you know, I'm all in favor of it, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And it may keep some people, the people that wait out on Sundays, I'm amazed that they'll wait out in the cold for hours to get in there, says a lot. Anyone else before we close the public hearing? All right, close the public hearing, and now move for a request for a motion to approve the liquor license amendment.
Mayor, I move the request by the owner of the Whistlestop 1 LLC, 24060 Woodward Avenue, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan, regarding an amendment to the Class C liquor license and operating agreement be approved, subject to city attorney review, and the mayor, city clerk, city manager, and city attorney be authorized to sign the agreement.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say that in the years that Whistlestop has been in operation, I feel like this commission has gotten a lot of feedback from neighbors, specifically the neighbors in the immediately affected area. And to my experience, the owners of Whistlestop have been very helpful in working with residents in that area. I know parking originally was an issue, I feel like that, I don't feel we get really too many complaints anymore about parking there, I believe, like, the owners of the Whistlestop have been great partners in helping to reduce that effect, and I, and as a business that is basically in our neighborhood, I believe that they've been good stewards of the location and great neighbors, and I really wanted to thank them for, you know, working with residents to make that whole business area run as smoothly as possible, so thank you.
I want to second that, certainly on the parking issue, parking, moving people up the street in the public lot, but also, I think with this amendment and the expansion, we're going to be moving, we talk about the immediate neighbors that won't have to look at the garbage anymore, it will now move to the parking lot that is, was Susan's special needs, that's going to make a big difference as well.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yep, so, okay. Any further discussion? May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazia?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. We're good. There you are. All right. And I guess if you stay around, we'll sign, right? Now you have to stay through the whole meeting, or you can come back. Okay, the next item on the agenda, condemnation of the property commonly known as 71 Devonshire Road, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan. Again, we'll have a public hearing, but Jim, could you start us off, please?
So the issue before us is a call for public hearing to condemn the property at 71 Devonshire. This is a process that we have used for a number of other properties in the city, only very, very rarely do we end up moving to demolish the property. When people hear of condemnation, typically, that's what you think, it's that we're moving to demolish the property, but really, what we're doing is moving up a step in enforcement to spur action on problem properties. We used this recently at another property in the city, and a few years ago, at one, it was across the street. So we have a number of issues that exist at the property. If you've been by the house, you can see a number of them from the street. There's been some citations, and this has been, this house has been an issue over the years, and it's gotten to the point now where the issues are, to the point where we have to do something. So earlier over the summer, the property was cited for blight, it was cited for health and safety code violations for the front porch stairs, and a number of other items. There were some site issues with dumpster bags being on-site along with some construction debris and other items in the rear yard. On October 14th, the Building Department received a message regarding the condition of the property, it's a noxious odor emitting from the property. The Police Department sent an officer out to view the property, the police chief and the city clerk also went out to look at it. No progress had been made on the prior notices of violations there, and in fact, the property had been getting worse. The side entry door facing Gatesboro Park was not secure, there's an entry door that's leaning against another door but was not latched or closed properly, there were windows that are broken out on the rear of the property. There was a number of issues in the yard, large trees that had been cut down and piled in the yard, numerous, numerous rat holes, so there's vermin infestation, the front porch is completely, looks completely inaccessible, the stairs are deteriorating, there's tall grass and weeds, and there's also some debris that's in the rear yard still that hasn't been addressed. So a notice was forwarded to the homeowner that the city is scheduling a public hearing for tonight to consider condemnation of the property, and instructed the homeowner to begin the permitting process for rehabilitation and to resolve all the property maintenance issues. No significant progress, progress has been made on that front. Amy can talk more about what has been done over the last month, but as of today, there's been no major progress on the property. So the homeowner did contact the Building Department on November 6 to indicate that she will be attending the public hearing. She stated she has contractors to clean the yard and reconstruct the front porch, but did not give a firm timeline when this would happen. And since the October meeting, we have had four additional complaints from residents regarding the condition of the property, so it continues to be something that's increasingly on everybody's radar and becoming a notorious problem. What I would also point your attention to is the motion to condemn contains a timeline, and again, this is a process we've used on other properties in town, and it gives very clear and direct direction to the property owner what they need to do. So by December 12, the sample motion in front of you requires a report from a structural engineer certifying that the structure is sound, and that all site issues, that's anything that's outside the building has to be remedied. So the trees would have to be disposed of, the yard cleaned up, the weeds removed, the rat infestation would basically just have to be eradicated or in process for being eradicated. For that, we typically would allow them to submit us receipts or something from an exterminator showing that they're taking care of those issues on the site. By January 13, 2020, completing all exterior renovations, that'll be fixing up the front porch, getting the windows fixed, getting the doors secured, getting all of that exterior work to button up the outside of the property and get that up to code. And then by February 10, 2020, complete all interior renovation. All work should be complete and final inspections held. It's an expedited timeline, but it's doable for a motivated owner. So progress on the property will be monitored by the city's building official and code enforcement. Bi-weekly progress inspections are to be held, all permits have to be obtained by licensed contractors, we won't allow homeowners' permits when a property's been condemned. And if the property is not in compliance within the time period set by the City Commission, or if the building official deems progress to be stalled, the City Commission in the motion would direct the city administration to pursue any action necessary to abate the existing nuisance up to and including demolition of the structure. Costs incurred by the city related to such abatement would be considered a lien against the property. And then finally, if the property is sold to a non-related party or individual, this timeline will reset. So we had a similar situation at the house on Kensington, where that property owner then, because of the condemnation hearing, was motivated to sell the property to someone who was able to take care of the issues. At that point, we reset the clock for the new party who bought the property, and they're well underway to. well underway to finishing up that project now. So those are the high points. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Amy, have anything to add?
I'll point out that the homeowner is here. She did, she indicated she was going to attend, and she is in the audience this evening. She did obtain, they did obtain a homeowner permit back in August for a kitchen and bathroom remodel. They did not obtain any of the trade permits, although they were instructed to do so. And there has been no inspection on that permit. So we're getting to the point where that permit would expire due to lack of inspection. We're uncertain of the progress in the property or what the interior of the property really looks like. I have received two additional comments from the public requesting that the condemnation go forward, indicating that it's been, you know, in decline for, for longer than this particular owner has owned it, but I understand that it has been in her family. They don't, everything that the city manager had indicated, you know, she did, she did call in, she said that she was entering into contracts with someone to repair the front porch, to remove the fallen tree, and that she would do some exterior maintenance, which is power washing. But those permits haven't been obtained, and at last checked by the police department, nothing had been done as far as the blight conditions.
All right. With that, we will open the public hearing. Do you want to raise anything? I guess, again, you've got a couple.
Hi. Brittany Flowers, owner of 71 Devonshire. We do, I had just signed a contract for them to come out and do the stairs. They have not given me a timeline due to weather conditions. They said it should be in the next couple of weeks. For the trees, they're finishing up on a site right now. They said they should also be out in the next couple of weeks. And right now, we're shopping for the windows and doors to see what we can get in, in the timeline for that exterior. We did get the drywall up in the house. We just have to finish the taping and mudding, and then cabinets will be going in, and so will the bathroom stuff as well. So, do you want to say anything?
When we inherited it, there was a, a large amount of things that needed to be done, and most of it was inside as far as, I mean, I understand the outside looks bad, but it was unlivable on the inside just due to things being piled up. There was just a lot of trash and a lot of it. Not that the, the walls were all fine, everything is in good condition as far as the structure, but it was just completely full, sometimes almost to the ceiling in certain areas. And so we've put, like, very large amounts of work into this house since we got into it, and it's been, it's been on the very top of our priority list since the moment we got in. We haven't been in there very long, and we had to clean it up first. We filled up the entire front yard with garbage bags probably six weeks in a row before we had three bedrooms fully available and cleaned out to where we could eventually get in there because we don't have any other home that we own, and we'd like to get that one up to a condition where we can live there instead of having to rent or do anything along those lines. But we have had a lot of progress, is what I'm getting at. It's just been on the inside of the home, and if it's just a matter of reorienting our priority to the outside, we can do that, and that's not an issue at all. So it needed to be done eventually anyways. We were just doing what we could do ourselves, the things that I have a background in that I can do, but I can't fix those stairs or remove those trees, so we've moved to third parties instead, which is what it sounds like you want us to do anyways. So, yes, I just think that we're doing it, we're on it.
Now, the permit that you had pulled for the kitchen and bathroom, I guess on the first floor, is that's what's being, that work is being completed such that?
It's close.
Such that there will be a?
They did not have a rough inspection on that work, nor that they obtained a trade permit, so all that drywall would need to come down so that the building official could see what was behind it.
He didn't say that to us when we pulled the permit at all. We, we discussed all of our plans with the building inspector, and he, he pulled the permit for us knowing what was happening. He didn't say anything about needing trade permits. We didn't change any electrical or any, we didn't do any, we just pulled down plaster and put up drywall.
Right. On the permit application itself, it stipulates trade permits are required, electrical, HVAC, and plumbing, and those would all need to be inspected prior to you putting up any insulation or drywall. So when you had it down to the studs, that would have been his first inspection, and he has not been out there for an inspection.
That was told to us.
All right.
Anybody have any questions?
I would just say that, I mean, okay, to pull down the drywall after, I mean, they're making work on it, they're making progress. To me, as a homeowner who's trying to make that leap of good faith, that would be crushed. That would be crushing. So you're saying it was part of a document that they received and not something that they were?
The building permit.
Okay.
Has that situation on.
But they weren't, they weren't told that you're going to have to get this inspected before you put drywall back up?
Right, you know, it's the process of the inspection.
Uh huh.
You know, it will be something that we could work out with the building official to see if it would be, okay, let's see what we can do now that they're at this juncture. But it would honestly have to be something that's worked out with the building official, not knowing what's behind.
Yeah.
Once you've got something, you need to bring it up to code.
Yeah, if I could just finish on that point, because that, that, to me, that sounds like a deal, almost a deal breaker. I mean, but what I would, I guess what I would ask Jim as this process here, right, and laid out, and you just described it, right? So if, if they were to hit these points as far as satisfying the requirements of this motion, it would be something where they could avoid condemnation. So even though this body would vote on this motion tonight, that doesn't mean that the property is condemned tonight.
Correct. It would mean, it would mean that the property is condemned.
So legally would mean it's condemned.
But.
But there's this whole, they have time to do all this stuff.
With a 90-day process.
Right there.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, so we vote on this tonight, then they still have 90 days.
Correct.
To retain the property.
Because you approving the motion to condemn the property allows us administratively to pursue, to pursue the further remedies to secure or clean up the property or do what we need to do to eliminate the issue. Ideally, we have to do none of that because we don't want to. Ideally, we want to get the property safe, secure, up to code.
Then just, if I could finish this one thought in my head before it vanishes, but so the vote tonight, if it was to be approved, it would, at the end of this, if none of these were satisfied, let's say they, they stumbled on all of this, the city's legal right is not to take ownership of the property, only to rectify the blight.
Correct.
So they would still be owners of the property.
Correct.
But they would, worst-case scenario, the house would be demolished.
Yeah, just maybe a little confusion.
Yeah.
There's a couple kinds of condemnation. There's the condemnation where the government actually takes somebody's property for public purpose. That's not this.
Okay.
When you're approving condemnation, what you're saying is that the property is in a nuisance condition as defined by your ordinances. And as Jim said, that doesn't mean that it's going to be taken, it doesn't mean the building's going to be demolished unless the property owner doesn't follow through. And at that point, the administration is authorized to do what needs to be done to, you know, correct the situation.
Okay. No, thank you for clarifying things.
Right, so for, if the, I guess, worst-case scenario here would be we would order the property demolished, we would demolish it, the property owner would still own it, and then they could sell it to whomever.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, obviously, there's a lot of value in that lot just by itself. So we're not taking it away from them.
But the goal is not to get to that point.
Right, we're trying to avoid that. 100% not to get to that point.
But you would be taking something away from us.
Well, we're.
Is the thing. I know to you, maybe it just seems like you're just taking the house, and then we can sell the property.
Understood.
But it is my family home, and I have three children, and this is our house. This is, I understand that it's a nuisance and it's ugly, and I get that, but this is my home, okay? I'm trying my best.
Understood.
So, please.
Well, you've, you've seen what the, the dates.
Yeah.
On this. I mean, is that?
We're going to put everything we have into it regardless because it's gonna, that, that's what we've been doing. I would like to try to finish the job I started. All that that's going to do is potentially change what order we do things in, but it's, in the end, we're, it's already all in the works. It's every penny of what we have that's actually is going into it, so.
Well, that's what I was thinking, so this is kind of that schedule.
I don't know, I don't know. That's, that's, it's hard for me to say. It's, as much as I can put in, and it's, there's so much, there's so many variables involved for me to be able to tell you if I could. I, I can tell you that I can do it for sure. I can't tell you that I can do it exactly within each step at 90 days, and then the next set of steps within 90 days. I, I don't have a pot of gold. I do have enough, but it's, I don't know that it could be expedited to that level. We'll see, I guess. It's, it's going to go as fast as it's going to go because that's as best as we can do.
So the first step is the structural engineer and all, all external, all outside work done.
When would the inspection on the interior need to be done? Would that be after January? Just prioritize the work?
Prioritize the work. We have completing that by February 10th.
Okay.
So the inspection on the interior can happen anytime.
Anytime, right before, okay.
Can I ask a question?
The reason we prioritize the exterior renovation is because it is open to the elements. That's higher priority to get that secured.
If they were to do all this work, and then the final step, you know, maybe all the interior renovations weren't completed, is there ever like an extension situation or how does that work?
So that's an administrative call, and that would be the building official ultimately looking at it and saying, yeah, you know, like if it's a couple of weeks, if there's been significant progress that's been made, that, you know, we're reasonable.
Okay.
Of course.
So with, with all these different steps, it sounds like, you know, one of the big issues is making sure that there's a clear communication going on with City Hall and, you know, the building inspector and everything. Are there certain steps that you need for them to take to make sure that you know the processes are moving forward versus just like the inspector going in at the, you know, December 12th mark and things like that?
So Kirsten, who's our building clerk, does a really good job of explaining the process, and she's available here in City Hall as well, and I am as well.
Great.
Building official isn't always available.
Okay.
You know, he's a part-time building official for us, but if there's an answer that needs to be had, we can get it relatively quickly.
Yeah.
He'll be monitoring, and one of the requests was bi-weekly inspections every week.
Okay.
So that he can see what's going on and that they're making progress and they're actually doing some, you know, the homeowners are doing some things to move along the project.
Do the homeowners set up those bi-weekly inspections?
For the condemnation, historically, we've done it, okay, Tuesdays work good for you, the building professional's here Tuesday, we'll do, we'll set them up on Tuesdays and we'll just get them on the calendar so they're all there.
Okay.
If one of those days don't work out for the homeowner, then we change it.
Yeah.
Thank you. We want to try to make this work, so, you know, even after the vote, I mean, we want to make, you know, we don't want you to lose the hope. But we need, you know, kind of both sides working together on this. And so I think that there's, the city wants to work with you, and I think the better, and I think communication is the most important thing, that you and the city are talking back and forth, nobody's out to get you. So, I mean, it's kind of, if you're open to discussing with the city and back and forth, it's going to make it a lot easier for everybody to know exactly what needs to be done and to know what needs to be done before the next step.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things is, is critical, so.
And this has worked before, so.
It has.
The 90 days is a pressure cooker for sure, but the necessary work can be done in the 90 days, as everyone has said. It's, you know, we want this to work for you, so if there's something, you know, that just the cooperation, the conversation with the, with the City Hall will help get the things done in a certain order, and then we can get there.
Yeah, so then, you know, the communication helps so there are no surprises, and you, you feel like, you know, every step of the way, you understand what's expected to.
Thank you. Anybody else want to?
Hey, Christopher Vanderkoch, new to the neighborhood of 15 Maplefield. I know the council said this has worked in the past, and we're very new. We just moved in September, so we don't have a long history with this, but just wondering, we have unexpected nine inches of snow out there, and again, I don't know the long history of this, but does the council know how often this has worked within 90 days in winter versus 90 days in summer versus kind of the cost for what's expected and what needs to be done in these 90 days? Is there any data surrounding that?
You know, really, once you get, you can do almost all of this work whether, you know, irregardless of weather. You know, some of the site cleanup issues, maybe, but maybe an issue in, you know, particularly cleaning up the rats on the property in the wintertime may be an issue. Again, we're reasonable, we can, we can work with them on specific things that can't be done if we, if the weather persists, but generally speaking, most of this is not dependent on the weather.
Okay. Potentially like as long as there's communication, like the woodroom, because I think the rats was part of the first 30 days.
Yeah. Yeah.
You'll find this very reasonable.
Right.
All right, any, anyone else? Close the public hearing, ask for a motion and condemnation. I've been wanting that long.
Mayor, I move that the structure on the property commonly known as 71 Devonshire Road, Pleasant Ridge, Michigan be condemned, and that the property be declared a public nuisance. The structure and property is a public nuisance for the reasons as set forth by the city's letter dated October 16th, 2019. The property owner has 90 days in total to comply with this ordinance with the following deadlines. By December 12th, 2019, submit a report from a structural engineer certifying the structure is sound. All site issues must be remedied. By January 13th, 2020, complete all exterior renovations. By February 10th, 2020, complete all interior renovation. All work should be complete and final inspections held. Progress on this property will be monitored by the city's building official and code enforcement. Bi-weekly progress inspections are to be held. All permits must be obtained by licensed contractors. If the property is not in compliance within the time period set by the city commission or if the building official deems progress to be stalled, the city commission directs the city administration to pursue any action necessary to abate the existing nuisance, up to and including demolition of the structure. Any costs incurred by the city related to such abatement shall be considered a lien against the property. If the property is sold to a non-related party or individual, the timeline will reset and the 90-day window will be, will commence with the date of close. The city shall deliver to the, the city shall deliver to the property owner a copy of this motion by first-class mail and by posting a copy on the front door of the property.
Is there support?
Yeah, a question.
Yeah.
Maybe good, and maybe it's not a question. Maybe good to just have a conversation about what the homeowner can do themselves and what requires a contractor based on the language.
I think that's a really good point.
So any materials work would have to be by a licensed contractor. Carpentry, building, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, those would all have to be licensed contractors.
Okay.
Any kind of painting, flooring, you know, moving the debris out of the yard, that can be done by the homeowner.
Okay. Is the drywall something that could be done by the homeowner?
No, that should be done by a licensed contractor.
And they need to pull permits for each of those.
The licensed contractors need to pull their own permits.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Can we vote?
Excuse, uh, thank you, Mayor. I mean, that's, that's my concern too, that this is gonna, I mean, yes, these issues didn't arrive overnight, but. But, I mean, just imagining the cost, obviously wanting to do the work your own... As a homeowner, right, to keep down the cost when cost is tight, and then having to bring in a contractor. Would there be an opportunity for a contractor to pull a permit, but the homeowner to do...
That would be between the homeowner and the contractor.
Okay, but that... Not that it's...
That's a contractual issue between the homeowner and the contractor. What would happen if the contractor pulled the work and the homeowners did it?
Yeah.
And there was some kind of violation? It would go to the contractor, and it would be his responsibility to make the correction. It could be go against his license.
Okay. I guess, yeah, for me, the concern is just like the cost of doing all this, especially in 90 days, seems really prohibitive. I really hope we can have a conversation where the drywall doesn't have to come down. I mean, I don't know if that's a conversation...
Well, this is the issue. And this is where we... We run into this issue periodically with property owners who aren't familiar with the process. And the issue is, once you've got a house, once you take the wall down, you need to then bring things up to code. So if the electrical doesn't meet code anymore, once you've demoed and once you've torn things down, now you have to bring the electrical up to code. And so when you put drywall back up again, we... You've triggered that review to bring certain things up to code. And it might not be a big deal, but it might, you know. But we just need to confirm. And that step hasn't been done yet. So that's why they pulled the permits. There's been... The inspector's never been inside the house. So one of the things I wanted to say to you guys, because, you know, we wanna... We don't want you making false starts and doing things that you then have to tear down again because the process... You know, a contractor knows the process. You may not. So that's why I'm going to encourage you guys to... We need to get this game plan in orders, because before you go any further with anything, talk to us. That's why we said, you know, the tradesmen need to be pulled. When you're doing demo, make sure you're also bringing things up to code at that point that you're triggering that you need to do. So the interior work, the interior renovation, really, you know, isn't... Isn't a major concern of ours from a code enforcement. We want the outside of the house to be secured. We want the outside of the house cleaned up and brought up to code. The inside of the house is their choice, what they want to do in there. What we need to make sure is, is the work that's started is done to code. And so, you know, we need to have a conversation quickly about what you need to do to make sure that, you know, we can verify that what you've done meets code. The building official has a chance to look at it. And so really, one of the things that needs to happen quickly is the building official needs to see the house so that he can look at it and tell them what they need to do, so that we can get that going, that process going quickly. You know, if the drywall hasn't been taped and mowed, you might be able to unscrew it and pull it off. And it's not, you know, the end of the world. But you might... The building official might just need to cut certain portions of it out to see the electrical and then, you know, replace a portion of the drywall. So I don't know that all that needs to come down. But that's where we need to get in there quickly. And if we haven't been in the house, because they haven't called for inspections or allowed us in, we need to quickly get to the point where we can say, "Okay, this is your list of things that have to be done to button up the kitchen renovation that you've started." You know, the rest of the house, maybe just hold off for now. Get the exterior, get the site buttoned up, get the kitchen done. Then the condemnation clock is done. And those further renovations, you know, can be done according to the standard process, but at a later date.
Okay.
That would be what I would encourage.
Can I say something else here?
The building official or the building instructor is our source of... It's the information we were going on. He seemed very relaxed about it. He said that as long as we weren't taking down anything that had insulation behind it, we were only doing walls that were in between rooms in the house, that he wouldn't have to come until after the project was done. And so this... It wasn't that we just blindly did it. We had information. It was... And it's from the person you're talking about. And so it was... It seems like it's a little bit that it's taking us by surprise because it's not at all what we were told by him.
You know, that was a conversation you might have had with the building official. He is a relaxed and friendly guy, but there do need to be rough inspections that haven't been done.
Would have had no problem with that had I known at the time. And I mean, I guess I... Yes, I could have read into it myself. But I thought speaking with the inspector was a pretty credible source, especially since I had already spoken with everybody here, with Amy and with the other woman that works in there. And they led me to him, and then he gave me this information. And so there was no reason for me to question it.
And we were also told that if we were gonna do electric, that we would have to get a separate permit for that. That had nothing to do with the drywall, because we weren't taking... We weren't doing the electrical. So we were told that if we choose to do electrical, then we'll get a permit.
If I could, we're not gonna... We're not gonna get this worked out tonight. The plan going forward, let's talk soon and figure out how to get that done for you guys. You know, we know there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the exterior of the property. I would say contact us soon, and we'll definitely work with you to get a written answer that we're all right there.
Documentation, I think, is really important.
Yeah, and we've got letters, and we've got the documentation we can look at. But again, you know, we wanna... We want to get this wrapped up. We want just to get the inspections done and get them approved and get you living in the house, hopefully. So, yeah, contact us. And the building inspector is in on Thursday, so call us tomorrow.
Okay.
Any further comments before we have a vote? Amy, can I call her?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Pizziak?
No.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Mescott?
Yes. Commissioner Perry's. Next item on the agenda is the Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2020 Community Application and Subrecipient Agreement. So we have a public hearing. Amy, do you wanna give us just a little?
So each year, the city is eligible for $7,000 in bonds through the Oakland County Community Development Improvement Program. It's a HUD program. Most of the time, that money is spent in low or moderate income areas. The city does not have a lower moderate income area. So we focus that money to our senior services program, which is senior bingo, senior field trips, different types of activities that the recreation director programs geared towards 65 or 62 and older. You don't have to be a senior to attend, but the money specifically goes to the seniors that do attend, so it allows for us to offer those programs. Shawnee has between 80 and 100 seniors that are pretty active in the program, that are taking the trips, the bingos, the other activities. I think there's been a couple of classes that have been offered. So that's where we historically program that money, and that's where we're asking for the money to be programmed again.
Are there any questions from up here before I open? Okay. Open the public hearing? It's getting smaller. Okay. Close the public hearing. Can I have a motion to approve the community application and subcipient agreement?
Your Honor, I need the Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2020 application, including the programming of $7,000 in public services, senior services line item, and subrecipient agreement be approved and that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Here we have a vote.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry? Yes. Mayor Mescott?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, ordinance to amend Chapter 78 Vegetation by the addition of new section... Section 78-74, trimming or cutting of trees susceptible to oak wilt. Before I have a public hear... Open the public hearing. Jim?
As we know, oak wilt is a fungal disease that can devastate oak trees, particularly red oaks. And it's a devastating disease because it's transmitted through the roots. So one tree that gets the infection can spread to any tree that is connected through the root system. And red oaks do graft their roots together underground, and they share resources. And when one of them is stressed, they send water and nutrients back and forth. It's very cool. But when it comes to oak wilt, it's also a transmission vector for the disease. So when one tree gets oak wilt, all of the oaks in that stand are basically gone. And it's very difficult to deal with when you have one tree that gets the disease or the fungus, because you then have to do... You either have to cut all the roots to separate the trees or, you know, you're just losing all of them. So it can be a very, very problematic thing. And we know that it's in the area. We haven't had any instances up here or nearby. But there are certain measures we need to take to make sure that this fungus does not spread. And that is basically trimming and cutting and doing maintenance on oak trees only during the dormant period for the fungus, which is between November 1 and March 31. That's the safe time to do any kind of tree work on oak trees. Given the importance of this, particularly in a community like Pleasant Ridge, where we do have a lot of oak trees, mature oak trees, we are proposing an ordinance that would prohibit working on oak trees between April 1 and November 1. There are provisions in the ordinance when an oak is damaged by a storm or some other external cause, that you can, of course, clean that up, you know, do what you need to do to secure the tree and remove the damage. But for work of choice, it needs to occur during that dormant period. And in fact, I was talking with the city's arborist today about when we can start doing our annual tree trimming work, which we usually hold off until the wintertime because of this issue. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the ordinance.
Any questions?
Yes, Mayor. Just real quick, I was... The portion, I fully understand and agree with the restriction on the intentional trimming within the parameters. Can you just kind of go over the city's attitude translated into the ordinance about damage done during a storm? Like, I mean, I... Because for me, that would be a concern if, okay, I have one of these trees and there was storm damage. What does the city expect if that were to happen on my property?
Right. So we state that it's the responsibility of the property owner or a contractor to repair any trees that are inadvertently damaged or injured by storms. And that's removing jagged surfaces and sealing the wound. You're supposed to use a tree pruning seal or a latex paint to seal over that wound, because the way that this fungus is transmitted is by beetles, and the beetles are attracted to sap. So when you have a fresh cut on an oak tree, that triggers this particular beetle who's attracted to that. So within 24 or 48 hours, you can have a beetle that transmits the fungus who's attracted to that sap. So ideally, you want to get that prune sealed up very, very quickly. So when we say wounds, whether made by trimming, construction, or accident, shall be treated immediately with an acceptable tree pruning seal or a latex paint to max... Mask the exposed wound for contamination and that shall occur as soon as possible, but not more than 48 hours of the time of injury, just because of those clocks that we have with this.
Yeah, I guess I just do... I was just thinking, like, if it's something I can get with my ladder, and yeah, I can put a sealant on it, or the latex paint would be an acceptable substitute. What about if it's 60 feet in the air, you know, something that's a little more difficult? That, I guess, that's where I would be concerned. Like, is there a city gonna show up and be like, "Hey, you gotta get to that," you know?
I mean, we would inform the homeowner, certainly. They gotta get someone out ASAP. And, I mean, most reputable tree guys who know what they're doing, if you tell them, like, "Oh, I got an oak tree that's damaged and we need this cleaned up," they understand and will prioritize getting that. You know, you don't have to fix all of the damage, you know, from the tree that came down, but getting a bucket up there and, you know, cleaning up the jagged edge and sealing it is a pretty straightforward and quick process. It can be done.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Okay. There's no case where you could imagine where, by virtue of this ordinance, you would have to order a resident to remove a whole tree? Like, because then we're starting to get up there in costs as far as, right? I mean, just quoting, to get a tree trimmed in this neighborhood can be very costly. So it's something where, okay, now the city's saying, "I have to remove this tree." My budget may be a little tight. I mean, there's... For me, that's a concern as a homeowner and as, you know, somebody on this board, is like, how are we gonna handle those type of situations?
Generally, if a tree is damaged enough by a storm or a break that it has to be removed, in my experience, most of that tree is already on the ground.
Yeah.
So, you know, that becomes an easier situation to deal with. Hopefully, your garage or your car is still intact.
Right.
But, because we've seen that as well.
Yeah.
So...
No, that's a good point, for sure. I guess that would be my only concern, is like, I don't want to be adopting this ordinance for the virtue of the entire community, right? Because these are a part of our community that we all treasure. We want to preserve. I want to get some language that, you know, codifies that concern about this problem. But I also don't want to put like a new burden on a homeowner. Maybe, "Oh, my gosh, I don't have three grand to take down this tree, you know, this month in the city." So I guess that would be my concern, is just that... And like you said, I mean, if there was storm damage, maybe half the tree is already, you know, on the ground. But just reading through this, that was just kind of my first take. It's just like, uh, yeah, I agree with the objective of the ordinance. I just don't want to be, you know, pushing this cost that could prohibitively cause somebody not to take care of this problem, you know? So, I mean, I would hope that going forward, you know, yourself and the city would, you know, if there was extenuating circumstances, you know, in that regard, that that'd be something where the city would work with the homeowner as far as, "Hey, you know, this has to come down. Can you, you know, get us some sort of timeline, or what are you thinking on this?"
The ordinance says nothing about the city ordering a tree removed.
Okay.
It only says that the wounds have to be sealed. So, yeah, we're not... I mean, this isn't telling us that we're gonna order trees removed.
Okay.
We're just trying to prevent a terrible disease from killing all over.
Exactly. Exactly.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? I'm going to open the public hearing. Amy, can I assume that we got no...
There was some comments.
No comments? Comments on wilt?
Jamie Lyerlich, 33, Norwich. Is there anything in this ordinance about disposal of wood from these trees? And is that an aspect that needs to be concerned with?
Yes, Section 78-74D subsection E. Dead oak trees will be removed and properly disposed by chipping to less than three inches or removed to a disposal site for debarking, burning, or burial. Stumps left by the removal of oak trees shall be properly removed or buried.
That talks about trees, not branches or partial branches.
Right. So, I mean, as a practical matter, those are chipped by whoever's removed them, usually.
I'm more saying, you know, if I'm putting... Am I putting the community in danger by putting those out in three-foot lengths?
Is it contagious, right? Are you saying like...
Yeah. Am I putting... Do I need to worry about it? Or can I put three-foot lengths out on those?
Well, you know, if you're going to be doing that for chipping, ultimately, those are chipped anyways by the city, but...
The tree fairies take those away.
Right. You know, if it's... As a practical matter, for a smaller brush, if it's fallen, if you're putting it out, because you can only do up to four inch for the city remove. Most of that is either probably dead wood already, which doesn't have the sap, which attracts the beetles.
Well, that's helpful.
Yeah. And if it's not dead wood, then you should not have cut it. So, but yeah, that's... That's an issue I can't answer for every situation, but listen to...
I'm getting up now for those ones. Rob Sack at 8 Fairwood, I'm getting up. So from my standpoint, we had Detroit Edison Cruise hire a tree trimming company coming here earlier this year and trim all of our trees except for the oaks. And they said they would be back in November to do the oaks. Well, they came back in early October when it was 60 degrees out, started trimming all of our oak trees. I called an arborist, certified arborist, and I said, you can't cut them now. I then called the company who was in our city cutting those oak trees. I said, man, I got some oak trees in my yard, can I cut them now? And they said, oh, no, you can't cut them until after November. And I said, well, why are your crews here coming? Well, because Detroit Edison said we had to. Well, wait a minute, you're a certified arborist and you know you're not supposed to, but you're doing it? And we live in a forest. I mean, that was, that was totally irresponsible. So I totally support that it's like, wait until it's appropriate and then cut them. And I'm talking about the major trimming that Edison does, the hack jobs. So not trying to hurt a homeowner trying to trim, but I support this one. Thanks.
Good. Anyone else? Close the public hearing. May we have a motion?
Your honor, I move ordinance 437 to amend chapter 78. Vegetation by the addition of a new section, section 78 dash 74. Trimming or cutting of trees susceptible to oak wilt be adopted.
Fuck it. Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is city commission liaison reports. We'll start with Commissioner Scott and historical commission.
Yeah, just a couple of things. And if I could ask a favor, could someone grab one of the green tiles off the, I just forgot to grab it on the way in. We've got our tree lighting ceremony on the 2nd of December. The historical museum will be open that evening during the tree lighting ceremony. So if you'd like to come in, get warm, enjoy the things that are in the museum, it'd be a great opportunity to just see what's in there and check out the files on your home. You might want to add something to the file for your home so that future homeowners might see something or maybe just leave a card in there or something. It's just kind of fun to leave something behind. The other thing is we've set a date for the home and garden tour next year, I believe that's September 12.
Cool.
And so we've moved it to the fall. It turned out to be a really good time of the year to hold it this year. So we're gonna do that again next year in September. It's never too early to encourage people to put their homes on the tour, although I admit I am someone that has often been asked and have not done it myself. I encourage other people to do it. But that's a, it's a good thing for the community. I think we had eight total homes and gardens this year and hoping to have the same amount or more next year. And then the last thing is we're wrapping up our 100th year celebration in Pleasant Ridge. The historical commission had commissioned these tiles from Poawik, which celebrates the 100th anniversary. We have just a few of these left, so if you have not already purchased your tile, I'm a horrible Vanuahite. So, but if you haven't purchased one yet, they're available here at City Hall. I think there are four or five left and.
Did you say they're $50?
They are $50 each. If you'd like a frame for it, Poawik will commission a frame, a wooden frame to go with it. But that's it for me. I already have one.
If you have pre-ordered your tile and have not come and picked it up, we do have several of the preorder individuals that have not and the individuals that ordered the framed tiles that have not, so we still, we still have those at City Hall, too.
Oh, cool.
Awesome.
They're really cool and I think you'd be sad if you didn't come get them.
I would think so, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wall Recreation Commission.
Okay, first of all, I'm gonna talk about what a good situation the fall, hayride. It was a bad day, but we still had a good turnout. It was like 300.
We were guessing like two, about 200.
Which is pretty good if you saw how horrifying day it was. Buckets of rain, but we had, what burger was it?
Hunter House.
Hunter House. I mean, the kids got their faces painted, the animals were still cute, it was, it was good. Okay, that aside, coming up, what's coming up? Tuesday, November 19th, Junior Garden Club meeting at the Rec Center, 3:45. Must be pre-registered by the 18th. This is where I'm also gonna implore you to please, for all these things I'm saying, like, I know everybody gets busy, but get registered, go online and register for these things because what happens is if we don't have enough people, we end up canceling things. Like, we had to cancel the toddler party, the holiday toddler party, which was disappointing. So these things are really awesome events, so just, you know, just make sure and register for it. Monday, December 2nd, tree lighting. We're gonna light a tree and have the museum open at Memorial Park, 6:00 PM. I feel like Santa's showing up for that, potential reindeer, hot cocoa. Saturday, December 14th, breakfast was seen at the community center, 10:00 AM. Must be pre-registered by the 9th of September, not September, sorry, December. Fee is $3 per person. Saturday, December 14th, letters to Santa due by 11:00 AM at the community center. Boxes will be put out Monday, December 2nd, or letters can be dropped at City Hall Monday through Thursday, 8:00 PM, excuse me, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Okay. Monday, December 23rd, gingerbread house making at the community center, 10:00 AM. This is a new event. I've heard that the gingerbread's very delicious, right? Must be pre-registered by 12:16. Fee is $15 per child, includes all materials and a hot cocoa bar. So you can get your kids all jacked up on sugar and some home.
Is that Junior Garden Club or Junior?
It's a kid's.
It's just a kid thing.
Okay.
You have to be a kid?
Yeah. Maybe we can do a subplot, but we're talking about the kids. And the last thing is Metal Recall Holiday Tour and Lunch. Metal Recall is so cool if you haven't been there, it's amazingly beautiful. Wednesday, December 18th, 8:20 AM, cost is $18 per person and lunch cost is on your own. One of the other things I want to comment on is how everyone rallied around the troops for the candy. How many pounds did we end up with?
553.
Can you believe this? That's a lot of candy to go to the troops. That's really amazing, we pulled together Pleasant Ridge.
Congratulations, Cheryl Ramos, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
She wins the prize.
She did, she like guessed the jelly beans in the jar. Oh, okay, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for?
Oh, yes, questions, comments?
Commissioner Kruzeak, Ferndale Public Schools, your last report.
My last report. Thank you, Mayor. Well, Superintendent Donnie Abasi and Jamie Stottlemyre, I appreciate them coming tonight.
It was great.
I mean, that's a very important issue. I'm really glad she was here, he was here to clarify their thinking on Roosevelt, because obviously we have a concern about the future of that site, so I'm glad to hear that they're planning on Casa coming over here and utilizing that site. I have a report from the 1021 school board meeting. One of my favorite parts of this meeting is the superintendent's excellence award. This is when Superintendent Abasi identifies two students from the entire student population to get up and cheer. This month at, from Ferndale High School, it was Kyra Newman. She's a National Honor Society member, incredible athlete, on the executive board of the United Student Assembly. She's in orchestra and theater and her teachers describe her as motivated, mature, and hardworking. And that little resume obviously goes a long way to proving those accolades. Morgan Karnick from Lower Elementary, he's a second grader. He's hardworking, he's a leader in second grade. Actually, Morgan, excuse me, is a girl, young girl. She's a hard worker, she's a leader in second grade, she volunteers in her community. And this is so cool, everyone was so happy to hear this. She's this budding artist and to begin the school year, she did this beautiful portrait of her teacher and then hung it in the classroom and it's hanging there now. So she's described as helpful, kind, and smart and definitely worthy of the superintendent's excellence award. Also, during the meeting, Superintendent Abasi could have been here herself, but they went over the superintendent goal areas for the school year, for 19 through 2020, talking about the bond issue, the bond planning, and just student achievement and growth. There also was an update on enrollment figures. She touched a little bit on the elementary numbers. District-wide, the head count was 3,084. I think that's pretty stable as far as indexed to previous years, so I think they're happy with that number. And then they're always happy with this, but a little less happy than years before. The FHS Golden Eagle Marching Band took second place at the states. They came up just short after having many, many years of winning the state championship. Speaking to the superintendent tonight, it was about as close as that competition can get. But they did win the caption award for visual performance, so nothing to sneeze about and it is a point of pride for the entire community. So that program continues to amaze and compete statewide. So very proud of them at the state level. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
And finally, Commissioner Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission and DDA met on October 28th at the community center. The planning commission held a public hearing regarding the zoning ordinance amendment for air conditioning compressor and permanent generator standards, like sound standards and noise level standards. After a robust discussion, they unanimously agreed to recommend the amendment to the city commission, and I think we'll be discussing it a little later, will be, and it was good because they had some public input and everything, too, which was, so we got a lot of questions and were able to really, they were able to really think it through. Our next planning commission meeting and DDA meeting will be on Monday, January 27th, 2020, right here at City Hall.
So it'll be fun, huh?
So thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right on. Next item is consideration of the official certification and election report of the general election held Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. Amy, would you like to tell us?
So there was an election last week. We had 697 voters turn out, that includes absentees, but 697 voters, 348 in precinct one and 349 in precinct two. It was, wow, a heated race. There was bets taken, there was who's gonna eat the last cookie, there was, there was a lot. So there was two city commissioner candidates for two seats. Christopher Budnick got 510 votes and then Commissioner Ann Perry got 611. Our library millage renewal passed overwhelmingly, 630 yes votes and 65 no votes. And then the.
90%. That's pretty cool.
Oakland Community College operating renewal millage did okay. Yes, 589, no's 106. I went up to the county this morning and received the official certification, so it was dashing through the snow, actually. And so that's my report.
All right.
I like it.
Is there a motion to receive and file the official certification?
Your honor, I move that the official certification and election report of the November 5th, 2019 city general election be received and filed.
Second. May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kruzeak?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Carries.
And there was something additional I wanted to say, that we used the electronic poll book, it's not part of the official campus, but this was our first election with the electronic poll. I heard nothing but positive comments from the election inspectors who were kind of hesitant at first.
Kind of is a nice word.
The recreation director, who's also deputy clerk, did a training session for the inspectors on how to use it. It was pretty quick in like a week before the election, showing them how to use it. They did a great job. I didn't hear any complaints from anybody from the public about a holdup or having to use it or any additional time in line. So that, that went over well. And then for the November, for the March 10th election, which is the presidential primary, which is also gonna include the Ferndale. We will all be on precinct, so everybody will be in precinct one, you'll be seeing a new voter registration card in the mail. You'll still vote at the community center. But I did, just with the absentees that were received, I have a number of people that would like to be placed on the permanent list and receive applications for absentee ballot. So it seems like there is a big push for more people to vote absentee. So we will establish an absentee voter county board and it will be a select precinct and then there'll be an in-person precinct. So we're pretty excited.
Fewer people to get cookies, right? And then I, the absentee, I'm going to the. All right, well, we now move on to administering the oath. Administration of the oath of office to City Commissioner Ann Perry.
Thank you.
This is her third time, third go around, right?
Third time's a charm.
I, Ann Perry?
I, Ann Perry.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution, Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner?
Of Office, of the Office of City Commissioner.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration?
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs?
Of the affairs.
Of the city of Pleasant Ridge?
Of the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Free from partisan distinction or control?
Free from partisan distinction or control.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
They have a sitting. Next, oh, sorry. Next, we will administer the oath of office to City Commissioner Christopher Budnick.
I, Chris Budnick?
I, Chris Budnick.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan?
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge. Discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner?
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration of affairs?
An honest and efficient administration of affairs.
For the city of Pleasant Ridge?
For the city of Pleasant Ridge.
Free from partisan distinction or control?
Free from partisan distinction or control.
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, there has been some discussion whether Jason would actually leave.
I'm not gonna go.
Why don't we just sit there? Arm wrestling.
Congratulations, thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Au revoir. I'll miss you.
Thank you very much.
Your right-hand guy. Interesting, when I opened Facebook this morning, first thing I was agreeing with, November 12th, 2013, was when Brett and I both had our first meeting. Six years ago. All right, next item is governmental reports. I think we got a governmental report.
Here it comes.
There he is.
Good evening.
Hi.
I am here in Chief Noak's absence. It's weird how every November 15th. Teams line up, it's kind of odd. Just wanted to let everybody know, everything has been going well in Pleasant Ridge the past month. Nothing major to report. Our officers have been busy, not with the stuff on the street, but with training. All of our officers, again, went to, I remember a few years ago, we joined Oak Tech. So all of our officers went for an Oak Tech refresher for active shooter that I completed a couple weeks, or last week. The body cams are up and running, we're working out the wrinkles, seeing how that's going. December, we will get the in-car cameras, which will then sync up with the body cam, so we'll have some more wrinkles to iron out, but so far, it's going well. The officers are taking to them very well. So the one thing that I did want to bring up is with the snow that happened yesterday, it's gonna be that time of year where the landscaping companies are coming out and we're getting the complaints of noise at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. Well, we understand that snow needs to be cleared out. When we get those complaints, if they do come in, we will shut down the landscaping companies and tell them, hey, you gotta abide by the noise ordinance. So, they need to do that from 8:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. So, if anybody's at home watching, just advise your landscape companies that they do need to abide by that, 'cause the neighbors are not happy when they show up at 3:00 a.m. Other than that, things are going well, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Excellent.
You like those, don't you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item is consent agenda. Three basic items. Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. May we vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. We will move on to establishing a public hearing on Tuesday, December 10th, 2019, at 7:30 p.m. to solicit public comments on an ordinance to amend the Pleasant Ridge City Code by the addition of a new section 34-5214, in parentheses, establishing a maximum sound level for mechanical equipment in residential areas, and by the addition of a new section 82-1939, regarding the location of air conditioners and generators in the side yard. Just give us a little...
Sure. So, this item has been to the Planning Commission as a zoning ordinance amendment. It does require a public hearing at the Planning Commission. They considered this at the October meeting and recommended it forward to the City Commission. So, this time, we're asking that you schedule a public hearing here for December 10. The issue at hand is a somewhat recurring issue that we deal with at the staff level is a lack of detailed and specific standards for air conditioner compressor units and permanent generators. It leads to occasional neighbor disputes over location and noise of these items, particularly air conditioning units, because they run more frequently. The proposed ordinance would establish clear and administratively enforceable location and noise level limits, and would build in a neighbor consultation process. So, currently, the city considers air conditioner compressors and permanent generators to be accessory structures for the purposes of ordinance compliance. This is not explicitly specified in the code of ordinances, but it's been an administrative determination over the years. So, we also do not have specific noise standards for such units, only our general noise nuisance standards, which are not specific, but general in nature. So, this does result sometimes in the city having to determine what is an appropriate noise level on a case-by-case basis, what noise level constitutes a nuisance or not. That's a judgment call, and it's somewhat difficult to make. So, the proposed ordinance contains two components. First, an amendment that requires all air conditioner compressor units and outdoor generators to be located in a rear yard, unless approval is granted by the adjacent neighbor for the unit to be located in a side yard. And we know in Pleasant Ridge, we have a lot of eight, 10-foot separations in between houses, and sometimes these units in a side yard can be disruptive. So, the neighbor consultation process allows for these to continue to be located in the side yard as long as we have the neighbor signing off on that. If they won't or can't, then the unit would have to go in the rear yard. And oftentimes, you know, these units are placed in the side yard, yes, because it's often the most straightforward place to put them, but that doesn't mean we can't go in the rear yard. It's certainly doable. We're also adding specific noise standards to section 34-52, which is the nuisances section of the code of ordinances. The amendment would establish 60 decibels as the sound limit for air conditioner compressors measured six feet above grade at a property line. Power generators are not subject to these noise standards because they run infrequently, and when they do, there's power outage, and, you know, we deal with it. The ordinance is modeled after similar ordinances in Huntington Woods and Farmington. City of Farmington, which acquired neighbor permission to locate units in the side yard. The noise standards were crafted based on a survey of other communities' noise standards. Most cities have a noise limit of 55 or 60 decibels at the property line in residential districts. For Pleasant Ridge, because we do have, pen down, because we do have smaller lots, 55 decibel limit would be much more difficult to simply achieve here. So, in a tighter urban environment, 60 decibels was the limit we thought was most appropriate. And that is doable. We went out and did some test runs on a few properties to see when air conditioning compressors were running, and most of them meet this. Finally, there is one provision. If you have a property on Woodside or Kensington where you're a noisier just background environment, you may have a background environment of 61 decibels there because of the freeway noise.
61?
You may. But the sound is fine. But the ordinance does specify that if the ambient noise is above 60 decibels, then your air conditioner can increase three decibels above ambient. So, we do have a provision there, given that we do know we're in an urban environment, and some places can be noisier just based on everything else going on around us. So, the process tonight is to schedule a public hearing for the December 10 meeting, at which we will hold a public hearing, and then you can consider the role of the ordinance. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Can I have a motion to schedule a public hearing, please?
Your Honor, I move a public hearing be scheduled on Tuesday, November 12th. Oops. Tuesday, December 12th, or 10th, I think.
December 10th.
Change it.
7:30 p.m. to solicit public comment on the ordinance to amend the public, I'm sorry, the Pleasant Ridge City Code by the addition of a new section 34-52-whatever-14, establishing a maximum sound level for mechanical equipment in residential areas, and by the addition of a new section 82-1939, regarding the location of air conditioners and generators in the side yard.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay. Any further discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Your Honor, City Manager's Report.
Yes, thank you. So, obviously, we've been doing some work in here, and that's, I think, turned out quite nicely. We're also glad to have construction done, 'cause you know how living through a construction site is.
It was fast, I mean, it was pretty fast, though.
It was pretty quick. Yep.
She's doing a good job.
She's like, guys, four years.
The best days where we had to lock the front door and make everyone walk around the building.
In the mud.
Yeah. Some optimal days, but we made it, so we're here. Probably the biggest item to report is the roller coaster of emotion that is the pickup season. This one's going great.
Oh, my gosh.
Good.
So, just as the leaves started to fall, we obviously got nine inches of wet, heavy snow. Where do we go from here? I don't know. It's 17 degrees out right now. And looking at the 10-day forecast, six or seven days from now, it's supposed to get above freezing during the day, and then go back down at night. So, I don't know what's gonna happen. We'll get the leaves picked up if we can, but there's no guarantee that we can. So, for now, Briarlar's been doing a pretty good job of plowing around the leaf piles and leaving them in the street. But, you know, if we start to get into Thanksgiving or after, it may be that leaf collection is called off, because at that point, the threat of weather and whether things, you know, melt, that we can get the equipment to get the leaves, we don't know.
Do you know what a good point to mention, though, of this is? At the very least, at least you can put leaves in a bag, and they'll pick it up through December 15th, so you can make sure those leaves get out. I did it myself this way.
Right.
Preaching about it.
At this point, you're probably blowing them off the top of the snow.
Right. I mean, you know, at least it's an option.
It is December 15th.
Yes.
December 15th is the last day for bagged leaf picking.
Bagged leaf picking.
So, you know, if we do get a, so the variables at play here are, when does Briarlar convert all of their leaf equipment to snowplows? Because right now, they're running sort of half measures, 'cause their leaf pickup trucks are also snowplows. And once you convert those over, they're not converting them back, because they put a salt bucket in the back, and all the other things that go on. So, for now, they're plowing, and then they're also keeping the leaf trucks ready to go. At some point, you know, usually, once you get into December, and we know this, just based on weather patterns, you know, you're done with leaf pickup. They convert the trucks over because of what can happen. So, we're waiting and seeing. Ultimately, what will happen is if we can't get those leaves picked up, because the snow piles never melt or other weather conditions, they're gonna get plowed back up on your lawn, and it'll be a wonderful mess to clean up at some point over the winter and the spring. But, you know, that's just the nature of the game.
Nature. Maybe we'll...
Maybe. Hopefully. The other issue is they started the construction on the bumpout here, so we got some nice holes in the ground, which I also don't know what the plan is, because that's an MDOT project. I don't know if it's ever gonna get warm enough for them to pour concrete, or what's gonna happen there. So, given that it's only been a couple days, I have not heard from MDOT what their plan is, but we'll certainly talk to them, and, I mean, I guess worst case is they'll have to fill it in with stone for the winter, and come back in the spring and finish it. But right now, please pay attention to the construction barrels, because there is a hole in the road, and you will fall in with your car if you drive into the barrels. That's all. Yuck. So, other than that, we're like, yeah, how's the play?
I'm gonna come back with my Woodward Heights then. What's going on with Woodward Heights, anything? Sorry.
In terms of...
Are we doing anything more? We've got lines, we've got, as far as stop signs and...
The traffic calming, temporary measures will be in the spring. So, after, after everything was running into leaf pickup season and everything, we said we're coming back in the spring. So, yes. All of that will be moving forward once we get back to warmer weather.
That won't entail all those things in front of you. The overkill, the overkill for...
It will not.
Okay. Great.
But slows you down.
Oh, it does. Scared the death of the drive. Any questions for you? Okay. And we're gonna move on and finish this out with other business.
Have a quick one, Mayor. Just reminding everyone that on the third Tuesday of every month, and for the couple days after that during that week, there is the salt delivery from the Salt Berry. And so, put your five-gallon buckets out at the curb, and you will get it filled with salt, that you can salt your sidewalks and driveway with that. And then, make sure to keep it covered, though, because I have had, I have personally put left some on my front porch that does not get covered, and it turns into a brick of salt. And then, also, all through the winter, so year-round, is unbundled brush pickup on the, every third Tuesday as well. And sometimes, it happens a couple days after that, but, so, what are the rules with bundled brush?
So...
Four inches?
Four inches or less diameter for the branch.
Yeah.
No stumps, no brushes, bushes, no root balls. All of those things can put out. These things are chipped, so if you can't chip it, don't put it out. And then, that's, those are basically the major issues. If it's four inches or less diameter brush, we'll take it.
Cool. So, every third Tuesday, it's a good day.
And you're right, sometimes, the volume of brush or other scheduling issues with Briarlar, it might take a couple days. Don't worry, we'll get it. We do, Tim does go around every Tuesday morning and take an inventory of where everyone has their brush out Tuesday morning, and we make sure that they get picked up.
Cool.
If you, if you take a chance and put your brush out on Wednesday, we know you put it out on Wednesday. And sometimes, it's picked up, but we can't guarantee it will.
The shell game of brush.
Right. So, don't put your brush out on Wednesday, and then call us and complain at that.
That's right.
We know.
Yeah, and the salt really is a great, you know, it's, you know, especially if we're gonna have weather like this all winter, it's like, get your buckets out there.
It's the same thing with the salt buckets. We inventory which ones are out on, Tim goes around...
It's a hug, Tim's watching.
Slip that bucket out.
We'd have to have Briarlar pull the GPS records for their trucks to see when they've gone down streets in the past, because you've had people calling and complaining, and there's no way of error. So, we had to. We had to go inventory system.
Good.
I have one more thing for other businesses.
Please.
Fern Care. If you haven't heard about it, it's a great organization that provides free healthcare uninsured. It's in Ferndale on Nine Mile. They're having a fundraiser at Lian and Lulu Wine Tasting. They do it every year. It's really fun, and the great part is, you know, they're working for tips, but they donate a certain portion of all their sales that day to Fern Care. So, it's Mary Louie, Mary...
Mary Louie.
Mary, she's one, Mary Louie, it's a wonderful person, and she does so much for the community, and it's just a really wonderful event. If you have any shopping to do, just stop in, it's really a cool thing.
Jason? Can I call on you from the audience?
How about just...
Can you tell us?
The Running Book Club.
Who you are and where you live.
This is actually pretty nice.
Takes you back.
He's like, show you up there.
The third Wednesday of every month, we'll continue to do the book club. This month's edition is Beneath the Tambourine Tree by Issa Sissé. Maybe some of you remember, this was a group of schoolgirls who were captured by Boko Haram and held, and then the release, and kind of the drama that associated with that whole story. But this comes highly recommended, and this will be our book for November. And my New Year's resolution is to pick some, I was gonna say, pick some cheerful, more cheerful material. 2020, we're gonna try and lighten up book club. But, yeah, the third Wednesday of every month, we'll continue to be there at the community center. And then, hopefully, in the new year, maybe towards the end of, maybe in the spring, when the weather gets nice, we'll move it outdoors. But, yeah, that'll keep, that'll keep going on, so. And if I could just say, I mean, it is honestly been a pleasure for the last eight years. Everyone from the staff to the electeds, I mean, this is a period in my life that I look back on. It was challenging at times, but I'll always look back on it with fondness, and people who supported not only the commission, but myself in particular, I'm really indebted to you, and I appreciate all your support, so, thank you. And best of luck to Chris. I don't know if it's something on Wellesley, because we were neighbors on Wellesley for many years, and I wish you nothing but luck. You're in good hands, you're gonna do a great job, and best of luck. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I expect you will still be reading packets online.
Ah, no! I will, I will, I will be able to drive on Woodward Heights without, with a clear caution.
We're gonna focus Woodward Heights on you. Is there anybody else that have their business? Yes.
One, I wanted to read, there'll be a presidential primary on March 10th. This is the primary where you have to declare. So, you have to declare whether you want a Republican ballot, Democratic ballot, or a non-presidential ballot, since there will be a school bond issue, if you don't want to participate in the primary. That information is retained for 22 months and is available to the parties, just so you know. Whatever ballot you choose will be made available to the parties. Coats for the cold, we have collection boxes at the community center and at City Hall. It runs through November 30th. The last day that City Hall is open is November 26th, but the community center will be open on the 29th and 30th to collect those coats, and then the Sheriff's, Oakland County Sheriff's Department individuals will come and pick them up and deliver those to the needy. And there are junior commission openings. I know there are at least two on the Recreation Commission. I don't think there's any on the Historical Commission. I think they're all just for those, and I have to check on the planning. But anybody that's interested, those applications are online, or they're available in City Hall.